You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the October 9th, 2024 meeting of the Michigan City Commission on the Social Status of African American Males. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Michigan City, there's no light.
The Indiana Plan and that's a good avenue and then other than that it's pretty much you guys.
Through the Michigan City High School, through the AK Smith, we have an articulation in reality with them. So any kid that takes building trades for two years is direct entry in our apprenticeship program. But the apprenticeship program is what it's all about and anybody can apply for our apprenticeship program 24/7, 365. The carpenters apprenticeship program takes applications all day long online at IKORCCtraining.com. And if you go to that website, there's a link to fill out an application. Anybody can go there, fill out an application. What we do is we accumulate the applications and then when we have enough applicants and we have the classroom space to create a class, we'll start bringing in applicants for interviews. You do not have to have any experience in construction to get into our program. That's what our apprenticeship is for. It's a four-year program.
Four years? It would be two years for apprenticeships.
No. Ours go for four weeks out of the year. So four times a year for four years. They also have to take four IB Tech courses because every member that graduates our apprenticeship program gets a degree from IB Tech at no cost to them. It's all included in the apprenticeship.
Probably got a job lined up while I'm in the union or something like that.
And that's what Nick was saying, like if those jobs are not out there, we can't aggressively organize because we just don't sign you up for carpentry. We just want to get carpentry on our work list. So I tell people, I will be doing you a disservice that might just sign you up and not, you know, you're still looking for work. So I want to be able to have a pathway. So we as business reps, we hit jobs and we have communications with contractors and we can see what jobs are coming up. Let's say kids graduating in June. We know we have five projects that's going to employ a collective 300 people. So we know we got 60 building trades kids that's going to be transitioning, but we communicate with the contractors to let them know like, hey, can you hire some of these apprentices when they do transition in? So those conversations that we have, but if the jobs are not out there, like this Chick Fale that you mentioned, I mean, it's just like, what are we doing?
Commissioner Jones, could you explain the Indiana Plan?
So the Indiana Plan, it's like, it's a nonprofit program that was put together in Indiana, State of Indiana, to help give minorities an opportunity to transition into trades. It's creating exposure and it's a free program. Like it's a two-week program, doesn't cost you anything. You just go through the program. Once you pass the program successfully, you, for us, I can't speak for all the trades, I know for us, you can become a direct entry into our organization. But although you're a direct entry, I have to make sure you, I have those jobs to send you to because if I don't have it, I would be doing you a disservice by just bringing you in. So Indiana Plan is great. I went to the Indiana Plan, it was 2011 and I worked at Locke Elementary in Gary, Indiana when it converted that into a whole girls' school. That was amazing. My first commercial project, so yeah.
The Indiana Plan kind of gives everybody a taste of each of the trades. So it's not just focused on carpentry. They get to do a little bit of each of the trades and then they get to tour those training centers, you know, because we know not everyone's going to be a carpenter, you know, and that's fine. Everybody has a place that they want to go and they could do that and there's plenty of opportunity out there. Most of the trades are about the same when it comes to the apprenticeship programs and the IB Tech degrees. I know some of the trades might only have certain windows where you can apply. I know that's where we're different. We take the applications all year long, but for the most part, you know, the living wage and the benefits are provided by all the trades in Maryland, which trade you go into.
Excuse me. Some years ago, many years ago, I had taken a teaching and counseling position at one of the Job Corps centers, right outside of DC. And we had set up all of our trade classes were union. We had union employees that go teach, I'm assuming cement, carpentry, clash dream, painting, everything were unioned guys. And we were fortunate in that, back then, I know for a second, I had used five years of apprenticeship, but they were doing, they just were aware of that. Then they were shipping our kids to Atlanta to build their big dusty. And they got to go right into it. They got a trailer and they had money from the Job Corps, they could get something, a little car, did back and forth and they put two of them in each trailer. And they built, I mean, that's a whole union job, obviously, but I was very, very impressed by how the unions were organized and how they transported kids from, you know, from really working into being played by our citizens.
Yeah, like that. Job Corps.
It's Job Corps, yeah. That's our position.
We're involved with Job Corps down in Indianapolis. That's our main office is, and I know they get Job Corps students down there.
Our biggest advocate back then was Ken Kennedy. He'd come out different services, whatever, we'd go to his office and come down here and they really pushed things. So we had bike rolls for it, but the union were the major support unit because everybody who came in and taught was a union worker, you know, a full journey. And they took them to the apprenticeship program and they said within five years, it would be journey in some of the trades.
You know, I love what I do, I'm starting by saying, I love, it's valuable when I see somebody that I can bring in and literally changes their life. It can change your whole family dynamic. Like this, what we do and what I do is life-changing. Like you might've been that first person, might be able to be that first person by the time you turn 20 years old, purchase your first home. You know, you might be that first person that starts your, become an entrepreneur or build, I mean, build that rental property, I mean, whatever it is, like this is life-changing for a lot of people and I like giving people that opportunity. But I know it's a lot of, you know, people that just don't know. There's a lot of things out there, a lot of organizations out there that just don't have the resources to even get the message out. So that's why, you know, when I have the opportunity to come in and speak to like the commissions or mentor at church or whatever it is, I try to show up, whether it's in the evening, weekend, it doesn't mean anything to me. I show up. I want to make sure that message is getting out there because I don't want people to feel like, you know, trades is not for me because, because it's African American. We talking about African American males and diversity. I don't want the African American race to feel like, you know, the trades is not for me. You gotta know somebody to be getting. So that's why I try to make sure I'm as involved as I am in different facets, so you know.
And that kind of goes back to what you were talking about a little bit, Commissioner Fly, about we have direct entry programs to come directly into the carpenters union, but we do reach out to many other organizations. The United Way is one of the ones that we work with in Northwest Indiana, Centers for Workforce Innovation, some of these nonprofit organizations, not necessarily to use them for recruiting, but maybe to get the word out on our behalf to maybe areas of the communities that we might not be tapping the resources from.
So United Way, when we started that conversation in June 2022, what we seen was a great resources because they was bringing a lot of different resources in the same room. And it's too many times we have people within our organization that still needs help, but because we make the money that we make, people feel like they don't have help. So I've literally had times where I'm doing a job dispatch and I call a guy and he said, oh man, I gotta turn the job down. I'm a single dad. I don't have nobody to watch the kids. I mean, but he, so things like that, United Way I know can help with our members like that. So that's why we make the connections because we also have people that need help within our organization. You know, everybody's got a different situation. You just gotta make sure you have all the resources around you.
If I may, we have Commissioner Millsap and then I have a question after Mr. Millsap.
First of all, thank you for moving into that role because we need somebody in that role and it's like, when that individual that you made reference to finally stop making those excuses, what would be the steps for that individual to take? Like do you have a business office where you locate him that he can come to? And Nick, please repeat that website for our viewing audience.
Yeah, absolutely. So.
So yes, we, so our office is located right on I-65, 1560 East 7th Court, Maryville, Indiana, 46410. You can visit the administration building to come in, actually the apprenticeship building to fill out an application, or you can go to the website like Nick was talking about and fill out an application. But the first steps is everybody fill out an application, they want to transition into the apprenticeship. But also I tell people, you can stop by the office and get my contact and reach out to me. So again, I can help guide you in the right direction because a lot of times I might talk to a kid that might be 20 years old, but he actually went through a building trades program in Michigan City, but now he's trying to figure out a way to get in, or really he's kind of a direct entry because he's actually successfully completed that program. So without having that conversation, I might not know. So by all means, reach out to me.
Is your number?
So my cell phone number is 219-699-7250. Like I said, I tell people, if you're reaching out to me, make sure you leave me a voicemail, text message because I receive a lot of phone calls, but I do do my best to follow up accordingly. I got a lot of people that always exchanging my contacts. If you have a resume, email me a resume at TWILLIAMS@CMRCC.com so I can also see it because I might see that you's a building trades program or a Job Corps person so I can help bring that up.
Repeat that email.
T W I L L I A M S. T has in Travis. T W I L L I A M S at CMRCC.com.
C M R C?
C C dot com.
And could you repeat that website, the K I K O R?
Yep. So the training website is IKORCCtraining.com and you can go there to fill out the application. And my cell phone number is also 219-293-1007. I'm not ashamed to give it out. Anybody can give me a call if you're interested. I'm like Travis, I'll talk to anybody. If I don't answer, please leave a voicemail or shoot me a text.
What I have to say is more like more of a statement. First of all, the local numbers are 777, only 10 black members, that's roughly 1.3%. That's disturbing, like you said. But what's more disturbing is that we live in this city and I want to thank the, I think it was the ministerial alliance at the time, I believe Pastor Kearns, Pastor Ashley, Brett Kelly, and there was some other people. We met at Central School and we talked about this Indiana Plan. And it amazes me how people seem like they want to help only when election time come around. When these people get in office, everybody disappears. We need to talk about the real problems right now because I've been involved with politics now, I know better than, I can't sit here and not say nothing. Economic development is a problem in Michigan City. Redevelopment is a problem in Michigan City. When you enter into an agreement to get something built around here, it's your duty, it's human rights responsibility to make sure that they're following the hiring ordinance. Year after year after year, big money overcomes common sense. As a minority, we will never be given a chance. So I sit here and I look, if I was my son, I'd be saying, why would I join you? Why would I join a union when there's no jobs here, but we see all the work that's going around, but I don't see me. These are the things that's depressing for us and I know that the union got involved with this last election. I don't understand, if promises are being made, then promises should be taken care of. We need people like Jim, we need people like you Nick, setting on redevelopment and economic development. That way this stuff won't get, it won't escape. I don't know if I'm making you a voting member or not, but we need true members on these boards that truly care about the people in this community. It's sad, we're not hiring nobody that's from Michigan City. You damn sure ain't getting hired if you ask them that.
It is.
I just, I just wanted to say that, and then to the ministerial alliance, Kearns, Pastor Kearns, Pastor Ashley, all of Brett Kelly, all those brothers who spoke up, I believe Ms. Moore, you was present at Central School that day as well. We had Sheila sitting across the table, had Dr. Cora sitting over there, oh yeah, yeah, we'll do everything, we'll get that sound like a great idea. It all went to the wayside again. And then we come into our city and the only people that can change this, to be honest with you, is the mayor's office. It's the people that's wanted to run those offices like human rights, human rights, redevelopment. Who points to people on redevelopment? Who points to people on economic development? If we truly want to change this, that has to come from within there and that's been my whole thing. If you don't like what's going on in your community, you change it through elections. You can't change it through violence. We have to change it through elections. But we can't keep going down the same slope again and nothing's getting done. And here we are with African American mayor, police chief, school board president, I mean, yeah, school board president, and we have a school and a superintendent and nobody's addressing these issues. And we know the math scores are bad at the school and that's part of trying to get, becoming a union person as well. You gotta have decent math scores at least, right? What do we do to change this? For real, I mean, let's talk the real, what do we really need to do to change this?
Fired up. I love this conversation because everything, some of the things that you said makes me think about my vision, my thought process because I was the same way. I don't like complaining about things. If you want to change things, be that solution. What are you going to do to fix it? So I've never been that type of person that complain about things. I've always been that person that stay positive. I'm always looking out for people regardless of the race. Take race out of it, it doesn't matter, you know? If you somebody that's really got this in the right direction and you in a position to actually change it, change it. Don't ask permission or ask example, I mean, advice like, no, go out and do it. Go out and be boots on the ground and actually ask, start that conversation and go talk to those kids. So that's the things that we do. We go in to talk to the kids when I'm in like Michigan City, not Michigan City area, but in the area like yesterday, matter of fact, I was in Gary, Indiana. I stopped in Lake Worth schools and I went and talked to the superintendent to figure out a good day I can come in and talk to the kids. Like I want to randomly, I don't need this career fair to, you know, have the kids in the room. I want to just show up and just go talk to the kids and let them know like the things that's going on. So creating common ground so they'll know, I'm just a person just like you. You can be, you can join this organization and do a lot of great things and I'm just letting you know what I do on a day-to-day basis. It's just like, you gotta have those right people that's got the right intentions and like what you're saying with politics, I've experienced that and it's sad the way it works and you know, I tried and I don't live in a city of Gary anymore and I applied to be on a redevelopment committee in there because I feel like I bring a lot of good resources back to the community because I'm throughout a lot of different places, Indiana, Kentucky and Ohio. It's like, I know it's a lot of red tape, but I'm truly here to help, you know? I've been born and raised in the city 35 years, 35 years. You can't take that away from me. I'm here to help. You know, I still have family that lives in the city. I still got both of my grandparents that's living in the system, living out in the city. Like I'm advocating for the true change that needs to happen and I know the time is now. When you look at all this redevelopment that's going on, we have to take advantage of it now. And we can't keep waiting and keep pushing the conversations off. We have to do it now. So you know.
Just futures today, you know, having these conversations and getting the issues out in the open so that the community starts talking, you know? Like we said before, it's gotta be a collective, right? It's gotta take everybody. You know, different organizations such as this commission, you know, we've got some really good ties to the community who are sitting on this board. How many of you knew about the building trades or the carpenters specifically before today? A few of you, but now most of you do. You can go out and you can take that message to the community and you can let people know, you know, and start spreading the word.
What do we do for those young men that have work to solve?
So to join the carpenters union, that doesn't matter, right? The past is the past. Like Travis said, we want to give everybody an opportunity. We want to change their lives. Personally, I think a lot of times people give records is because they resort to doing what they got to do, you know? And if we can give everybody a living wage and benefits, they don't have to do those things, right? So it will automatically eliminate some of that stuff from happening in the community. Where it would be an issue is the job site. So for instance, felons can't work at schools, felons can't work at government properties. So you know, you gotta think about that, but there's plenty of other jobs out there that they can work on, you know? I mean, we have roadwork every year. The state never runs out of money to fix our roads, you know? That's what I did. I did a lot of bridge work. The work was there every year. So you know, you got jobs like that and you got private investments like this, just across the St. Joe County line, you got Amazon putting in a billion dollar project over there. You know, Microsoft's going to build a billion dollar project in the port. You know, we've got these, these private companies coming in and building these residential high rises. All those jobs are feasible for somebody that may have had a shady past, you know? But that past is the past. We want to change their life around and give them something to look forward to. But I will tell you, what we do is hard work, you know? Nothing about it's easy. It's dangerous work, but you get compensated very well for what you do.
And I just want to add, there, Mr. Hurt, for those people that are listening to us, you can always file for an exoneration. And the forms are online. It's kind of easy to do, right? I think there's only a couple of charges, the one on being murdered, serious violent injury, where you can't get exonerated or it has to come down to the prosecutor's consent and the victim, our family, the victim's family. So these things can be exonerated, but I want to just say this, I just want to say, all the things you're doing is great. I see what the union do, I see you guys putting money in lectures and all this, but sometimes you pick the wrong horse and I can't keep doing, I said on the urban enterprise zone as well. We have right now, economic development is cutting us out of tax dollars that would help the residents and businesses in our, in the urban enterprise zone. They're making backdoor agreements that is literally taking away from those residents who live in urban enterprise zone. Why are we having, I don't understand why we can't have partnerships that will make life better for everybody here? Why we keep, I appreciate you.
Transparency.
Yeah, and you know, due process is crucial, so I appreciate you.
And thank you for making us aware of Chick Fale. Number one, this shouldn't ever happen. Number two, they're almost halfway completed, but we need to prevent it from happening again.
Especially with some of these larger projects coming. It's a lot of work for Michigan City residents. So with all that being said, you know, diversity, equity and inclusion is a big part of what the carpenters union is all about. And so today, the carpenters union, the Central Midwest Regional Council of Carpenters would like to present the Michigan City Commission on the Social Status for African American Males a check for $2,000. Hopefully we can use these resources to get the word out to the community and get the minority numbers up.
Mr. Wood, let me know when you're ready to come over to the church.
Send me email because I move around a lot, not going to sit up in the宅 I do a lot of stuff. I do it for a reason. My title was big on me. I'm calling this lately, so I'm really here to really change that thing. For example, when I used to go to my meetings and stuff, it used to be one, maybe two of this, you know, African American males and the other African American males are retirees. Now it chills my heart when I go to a meeting last month, we had 16 African Americans sitting in that meeting because now you changing it. I didn't even throw this out there, but over the last 12 months, we grew 35% with our minority, African American participation, councilwide. I mean, that's a huge change and we constantly changing. So change is now. It's happening. My sister's getting out.
Thank you so much. You're welcome. You're welcome. You're welcome. You're running a work hour at this time. I want to thank them for, the union for coming out and giving a presentation. Presentations are no longer enough. I think it's come a time where we have to pick up a protest sign and change things in our communities. It's our responsibility. We can have those differences, we can talk about my shoes, we can talk about my voice. At the end of the day, it doesn't do nothing for my kids or your brain kids.
That's right.
We gotta take the scars for our kids. So we gotta focus difference, all that nonsense aside, and we gotta start fighting for what's right at the end of the day. That's all I'm going to say. Before I close this meeting, I want any commissioner briefly, I'm going to do this. Public comment, Mr. Kalavie, anything you want to add?
Yeah, just real quick, you know, back to the union apprenticeship, the Indiana Work One website, they have the contact information for every trade you want to go, Tommy Kalavie, 1316 Ohio Street. They got for the boilermakers, mill rice, bricklayers, operating engineers, carpenters, painters, cement mason, pile drivers, pipe fitters, construction teamsters, plumbers, electricians, roofers, sheet metal workers, glazers, pipe fitters, heat frosted slavers, technical engineers and ironworkers. Every one of them, right here, you can contact and get home, get into that trade. That's it.
That's Work One, right?
Go to workone.com, Google in, Work One Union Apprenticeship, they got them, every one of them.
Commissioner Fly, thank you.
I know we're getting later in the year and things start changing over for our officers of the board and different things of that nature. And so I did want to make a motion or consideration that we change the mandatory year being on the board before you comply for officer. Most, most members are here for two years and then they have to be reappointed. That's a year having to be on the board and then a year having to be considered to even be a part of the board as an officer. I think that's coming right in half. So I said we do two-thirds. I say you have to be on the board for six months. So that way, when someone, the officers come up, we have more officers in the pool, you know, because a lot of us deny it, you know? I know a few, they know, I don't want, you know, so we have more in the pool. I don't want to be any officer anymore. I had a great time with you guys on that tip. But I'm just saying more people in the pool, they can be able to be considered instead of like, in this instance, basically Mr. McCormick being forced, well, you know, to have to retain that because no one wanted to step up to that position, even though he said he wouldn't want to be there right now, but if he had to, he would. So I think if we open the pool up to six months, six months on the board, then you'd be considered to be an officer instead of a year. You don't get two years, so a year is a long time.
I personally say we shouldn't have no limitation. The body of this board, the person that we should have. So at that point, if this, to amend our bylaws, which we're going to have to have the attorney write that up, so we got to make sure we say it clearly. Yeah, we got to have, we got to make sure we say this clearly. So moving forward, you're saying that we should not have, you said six months, I'm saying no.
If that works fine and they walk it off the stand.
Whatever it is, just not that year for you to get to.
I will second that without, with no limitation to be an officer holder on this board. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Hearing none. Anybody else? One thing, Mr. McCormick, I sent your email, can you please pull that application down for the apprenticeship and put it on our website, please?
Yes.
I would greatly appreciate that. And great job, Nick. Great job to everybody here and Mr.
I just want to say that $2,000 was a blessing from God. Thank you all. Bless you.
Appreciate you, brother.
And I have one last person, I almost forgot, Pastor Johnson, please forgive me. Pastor Johnson has something he wants to say.
The Mind County Health Coalition did not have the chance to put that out in the atmosphere considering the breast cancer law that said, which was the success. Because we don't breast cancer not only for men, not only for women, but for men's too. And I'm finding out as I get more involved in the health area, that a lot of men are getting cancer in the breast, breast. And on the 26th of this month, the Mind County Health Coalition is having their 14th annual Real Being Well Peak Celebration, which will be at the Flying Temple out there on Front Suite. Tickets are $75 for a table of eight, yeah, five, six, they, it would be kind that this group, this.
What is the date on insertion?
October 26th. The last said in this month, it will go from six to 10. That's to help with the breast cancer for men's and women's. So. So it would be great that this group will sponsor a table, uh, the table is for eight to $5.60.
$75 a table of eight or $75 a piece?
$75 a piece.
A $560 for meal?
Uh, for the table.
For a table. A table. A table of eight.
Okay, I'm, I'm with you.
Would be $5.60.
Right.
One ticket would be $75.
Got you.
Because we are pressed for the time limitation, this first I heard of it, but we need to have a vote now because we don't meet till next month and then that will be over.
So a vote to make us go?
Yeah. He just put it on the floor that he would like to force a sponsor table.
I, I don't mind. I mean, $5.60, I think it's, I mean, I, I do think that's kind of, um, camera, camera from the board considering we are starting to be able to get funded more, but, uh, $5.60 is kind of substantial, but, uh, I think, I think we can sponsor half of the table. I say two fifty.
What do you else would have? You say $8.50?
Seventy-five per person. Seventy-five per person.
Who all would like to go?
I'd start at that, yeah.
Who would all like to go?
Yeah, I might have a...
I need a check schedule.
Okay. Your money? Yeah.
So they don't have eight?
We don't have eight anyway. I go with you.
That's true. You can, you can contact, uh, Keisha Ward, which is the executive director.
So I will move that, um, if, um, I'm not, I can't move, so, um, I would entertain a motion to pay for us to, um, sponsor two, two of us to go, that would be Mr. Johnson and myself.
Well, Mr. McCormick.
Yeah, Benny has scheduled.
Right, right, right.
That pays for the session.
He rates the thing.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't even see. But that'd be $300, I believe. So I would, first of all, this has a four people. Four, this has a vote on sending four of us to, to the, uh...
The Minority Health Coalition, uh, Real Men Well Peak. And it's gonna be located at, uh, Shrine of Two.
Okay.
On Front.
And what's the date? One more time?
October 26th, 2016 to 2017.
I will have...
It says all reservations are due by 9:30.
But see, that...
They extended it. They extended it.
They extended it.